So we must rejoice in it.
In the name of God, we will praise Him.
How many of you believe this is the day that the Lord has made for me?
In the name of God, we will praise Him.
Hallelujah. This is the day that the Lord has made for us to rejoice in the presence of God.
In the name of God, we will praise Him.
Those who are watching around the globe itself, I am so thankful to all the persons.
To those who are watching around the globe itself, I am so thankful to all the persons.
Especially the persons of God will touch each and every person, those who are hearing this word of God.
In the name of God, we will praise Him.
Because the word of God has the power to break the stones and the rocks and to enter the heart of the people.
Because the word of God has the power to break the stones and the rocks and to enter the heart of the people.
The word has the power to comfort the souls of the people. Hallelujah. The Bible says the word of God has the power to strengthen our inner man.
In the book of Isaiah, there is a word telling like that, "I have the mouth of the disciple to strengthen the people." In the book of Isaiah, there is a word telling like that, "I have the mouth of the disciple to strengthen the people."
I know you are a rejoice people.
You are a rejoice people.
The word is telling rejoice in the Lord and again I say rejoice in the Lord.
This world is full of gloomy people.
From the past 12 months, the world itself locked down and it's full of gloomy.
We don't know the other side of our future.
But each and every person and the child of God know what the things are going to happen. Because before the examination, we get all the question papers what is written in the Bible.
Before the examination, we get all the question papers what is written in the Bible.
He is the Alpha and the Omega. Before the things are happening, our God know what the things are going to happen next.
So I am telling a good news for you, our future glory will be more far better than the former glory.
Hagai 2:9 it's a telling. Hagai 2:9 it's a telling, the former glory of this church will be greater than it's level in the coming glory. I am telling and I am professing each and every person of you, I am telling this word of God, the life before Corona will be, the days you have passed, it has to be all the agonies and all your tribulations, all tensions will be gone and the coming glory will be far better than the former glory.
You know, in the book of Malachi, the Jews and the world is telling everything is gone.
But when the Messiah came, when the Christ came, everything is changing itself. That's the power of Christ. The word itself change our destination.
In the book of Samuel, the early priest Eli, his two sons Gophonim and Phinehas, they are telling our glory is gone.
In the book of Samuel, the early priest Eli, his two sons Gophonim and Phinehas, they are telling our glory is gone. In the war itself, the Israel people was destroyed and the throne of grace is captured by the Philistines army.
The people of Israel as well as the wife of Phinehas is telling our glory is gone from our land.
The next two words is telling, the book of Samuel, first Samuel, second chapter of itself, the next two words is telling, the God raises a new person Samuel.
Then the word is telling, the word of Samuel spread all over the land of Israel.
The next time we can see a new order of life is going to happen there. Before that, there is a time of priesthood, but the next time is a time of prophethood and as well as new kings are coming to Israel. I am professing each and every person of you, I am telling you the truth, a new order is coming into your life. Your life will change never than before. By repeating as well as the meditating power will be increased more than ever before. When the darkness increases, the even a small light will be, have the highest power to touch the nations. We know when the sin increases, the Bible tells the grace will be increased. When the big infirmities and diseases are coming, the healing power is also increasing. How many of you believe it? Hallelujah. When the sin increases, the Bible tells, in Romans 6:1, the Bible tells, when the sin increases, the grace also increases. In my childhood, I did not hear about Corona. It's a new word for a disease. Before 2000 years. The cross died in the cross and defeated the Corona. I believe it strongly. How many of you believe it? By his trips, by the wounds of Jesus, the Corona is defeated in the cross. So never fear this Corona or any pandemic. In the book of Revelation, great, great things are going to happen in this and is coming to this world. The world order will change again and again. But in the midst of all these things, we the children of God have the hope and glory. Why we have this hope in this hopeless situation? In the book of Colossians, first chapter, 26 the words they are telling, the hope of glory, Christ is inside of us. The Bible is telling, the book of Colossians, first chapter, 26 the word, the hope of glory, Christ is inside of me. So don't get feared or worried in this hopeless situation, our hope of glory, Christ is inside of us. Don't confess what we are seeing. We believe we are not walking by what we are seeing, but we are walking by faith. We can see only hope in this Bible only. I am working as a fireman in the fire department. A lot of situations, for the past 17 years, I am working as a government employee there. When an accident or an incident happen, all the people call God first. Second, they call 101 and the fire force. I attended thousands and thousands of accidents and incidents. I got not even a single incident with a smiling face at the first time. Sometimes the gas are leaking, sometimes buildings are collapsing, sometimes the vehicles are stuck in each other, it's a unhappy situation. But after we are working for some time, the people will get some hope. If a person can bring a hope to a hopeless situation, how much of below Christ can bring hope to you and me in a hopeless situation? Once I remember incidents. Few years back. Very near to Trivandhan airport. That's a place which is very near to sea as well as a land is there. Yeah, in a flight evening, a man is digging a small pit there. Putting some waste there. He built a big pits. Around 10 feet height, a pit he has built. Suddenly, it was sand, everything is collapsed. It has collapsed and everything has come upon his head and he is inside the pit. Simply his nose is outside. It is a hopeless situation, his wife is crying, his youth, his parents and every people is crying, it's a big colony, so all the peoples gathered there. His name is Bijou Salim. Every person is standing there and telling, Bijou Salim, don't cry, don't cry. But Bijou is crying a lot because he is know, there is no hope for that man. Suddenly, the police, MLAs and the ministers came there. Police commissioner came there. Collector came there. Because that is very near to the city, all the people gathered there. Some persons called fire force also. When we come there, we are attending such an incident the first time. But suddenly God has given an idea. To bring them concrete rings, I called into the persons who will gather there, to bring some concrete rings to put one by one, to make a artificial well there. Suddenly, they bring them and put there and when the 10 rings put there, it is easy for me to go inside. I slowly get to that person. For the first word, I tell to him, don't fear Salim, Bijou Salim, you will not die, if something happened to me, then only you will die. Suddenly, he stopped crying. So many persons are there, ministers are there, so many persons are there, but he trusts the words, he trusts the word, all who has come to that bad situation, I tell to him, don't fear. There are a lot of persons and yogis in the world and there are a lot of amateur philosophers. They are telling, don't worry, if you do like that, you will not worry, if you do like that, you will not worry, if you run like that, you will not worry. But our below this Christ did not tell like that, he died for us. He come to our situation. Hebrews 2:14 telling, he became a curse for us. He tempted like us. If you are telling, I am tempting, I am unable to pray, I am like that, I am tempted by the devil, but the Jesus is telling, before us, he is tempted. Galatians 3:13 is telling, Jesus became a curse for us. Jesus became a curse for us. And the next two words is telling, he brought our curse and he gave up his blessing to us. He brought our diseases and he give us his healings to us. What a living God, a blessed God we have. How many of you believe it? That God is telling, I will never blame you, nor forsake you. He is not an amateur philosopher. He left everything in the heaven and come into the form of a man. How much love he has given for you and me? He did not tell about love, he show his love. He show what is love. Every person in this world is telling about love. I am attending so many classes like that. But Jesus show his love for you and me. He sacrificed everything for us. Like that, this man is crying a lot and. My word has comfort humans and give him a strong belief in my word. Suddenly, slowly, I remove the sand within two and a half hour, I bring that man to. He hug him, kiss him and he can, he do whatever he want to do with me. So I am telling you too, how much we have loved Jesus Christ. In this situation also, he will never leave you alone and forsake you. Are you thinking, in this old age, that God will definitely throw me out? The Bible tell, definitely a big no. Sam's 92 verse 12. The word is telling, righteous and flawless like a palm tree. In the old age. What beautiful words it is. Please read the words and comfort and trust in the word of God. In the old age itself, everything will be left us, but our God is telling, God wants to show to the world, this is my beloved daughter who served my name in her youth, so I have to show this word, in this order also, I am caring her. How many of you believe it? God who is capable of doing everything for us. In this 2021, I am not giving you a single word from the word of God. Not own promise or anything. The whole Bible is made for us. Our God is an amizer to give us whole promise for whole year. For all the day, we are not eating dose every day. There are varieties of breakfast, varieties of lunch, everything we are having variety, like that, I am thinking, our God has each and every promise for each and every day. Each and every word of God is a promise for you and me. In the midst of diseases, there are words and promises for your healings. When you are a youth, there is a promise word for a youth situation. If you are carrying a throne of gray hair, gray hair, if you are having such a throne, the God has a promise for this situation also. If you are going through a financial problem, God has such a promise for this situation. If you don't know the future, the future is full of darkness, for that thing, the God has given you a promise. Because our God is a serious God. He wants to show to the world how I am caring my children. You and me have childrens. How much we have seen to look after our kids. If my kid asks me for a chocolate, did I bring him a snake or a viper? Did I give you such a thing? The Bible tells, if I am not giving him these bad things, how much our below Christ, our God will bring such good things for you and me. If you are asking for healing, the God will definitely give you the healing. If you are asking for souls, the God will give you souls in plenty for this churches. If you are asking for good future, the God will definitely give you such a bright future for you and me. All the good things definitely he will bring back to you. The world is in panic situation. But in this panic situation. In this panic situation, we have to rise up and glorify. These panic situations are the opportunities for you and me to arise and shine forth and to give the glory and peace to the world. Why Daniel became a leader in a critical situation? How David became a leader? All the peoples are in panic situation, even the king Saul is in panic situation, in the midst of these things, and David came as a leader. Such a situation, you and me are here in this world to glorify Jesus. The world is full of questions. You have the answer that describes. How many of you believe it? For such a, one time, the Mordecai told to Esther, for such a situation, you are here in this throne. Do you think because of our sandizing and because of our mask, we are alive here? From the past 2020 February 2, this day itself, I am working with Corona patients. I am going there, getting the food and every person, you know, I am not serving some local people or anything, ministers also there, that's why we have to go there. If a minister is stuck by Corona, his whole family is leaving him and he is in a single room. I am thinking not because of my BP kit or anything or my sandizing, alive, not because of Corona. Every time I confess the word of God, I am covered by the blood of Jesus. That death spirit has go through the land of Egypt. But the people who are staying in the land of Goshen is protected by the blood of Jesus Christ. You and me are covered by the blood of the lamb, which is slaughtered the cross for you and me and give us every drop of blood for you and me. He has redeemed you and me by his precious blood. A word you can read from the book of John, chapter 3, verse 18, Bible is telling. We have two birth. One is by a natural birth. The other is a supernatural birth. We are born in this world by. We are born in this world by the grace of our father and mother.
We have given you all the words.
That is called our outer man.
We have given you all the words.
Sometimes our grandparents will tell, the nose is resembling like our father.
We have given you all the words.
You have the same color of your grandparents.
We have given you all the words.
You have the same year of your uncle.
We have given you all the words.
These are the things we have got from our parents.
We have given you all the words.
So, this is a natural birth.
This is a natural birth.
Our natural birth give us citizenship in this world.
We have given you all the words.
We are talking a natural language by this natural birth.
We have given you all the words.
But the Bible tells.
He said, "Love is the love of God."
There is a supernatural birth is also there.
He said, "Love is the love of God."
It is a born again experience.
We have given you all the words.
How we get a born again experience?
We have given you all the words.
When we confess Jesus Christ as our Lord and Savior and we tell, we are a zinger, he died in the cross for us, he is buried and resurrected for me. That time, the Bible is telling, we are born from God.
After Jesus Christ, he is a merciful God.
I know all the persons gathered here has confessed with their mouth and believing heart that Jesus Christ is my Lord and Savior.
We have given you all the words.
Because you are born from the Spirit of Father.
We have given you all the words.
John 4:24 is telling, our God is spirit.
He said, "Love is the love of God."
That is why we are born from a spiritual father.
We have given you all the words.
So, a man have three parts.
We have given you all the words.
You and me have three parts.
We have given you all the words.
All the persons living in this world have three parts.
We have given you all the words.
Our body.
Our soul.
Our spirit.
Our army.
Three parts, a body, soul and spirit.
Army, soul, and spirit.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
But, those who confess and give their life to Jesus have a born again experience also.
We have given you all the words.
Hallelujah.
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 You have two births, a natural birth and a supernatural born again experience.
We have given you all the words.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
We are born as a natural birth and we are born again as a supernatural birth.
We have given you all the words.
Supernatural birth is not possible to the people those who are living and not confess as Jesus Christ as a Savior.
We have given you all the words.
We are a privileged people of God.
We have given you all the words.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. The Bible tells in 1 John, 3, 3 verse 1 is telling, look and behold, we are the children of God.
We have given you all the words.
The word is telling, we are the children of God.
We have given you all the words.
The special love of God is restored upon you and me.
We have given you all the words.
Our earthly parents have childrens as well as beloved childrens.
We have given you all the words.
Those who obey the parents, the parents have a special love for them.
We have given you all the words.
The Bible tells, we are the beloved children of God.
He said, "Love is the love of God."
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
It is a special privilege of you and me.
We have given you all the words.
So, we are born in the spirit.
We have given you all the words.
We have a supernatural birth.
We have given you all the words.
So, the Bible tells, we are like a wind which is blowing from one place to another.
We have given you all the words.
I travel from another state to here, for that traveling, I need seven hours of traveling.
We have given you all the words.
But the Bible is telling.
He said, "Love is the love of God."
As a supernatural birth, we can travel in the spiritual realm.
He said, "Love is the love of God."
Last month, do you heard about a cyclone, Buravi is coming?
Buravi, a solar storm.
When Buravi came to Silo in Kerala, we are in jeopardy for the disaster.
When Buravi came to Silo, we were scared.
For three days, we are in panic situation.
We had been scared for three days.
Cyclone is coming.
We have been scared for three days.
When it comes to Silo, we are watching, what is going to happen there?
We have seen it.
We are sensing, the satellite is sensing which way this wind is going.
We have seen it.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
All the ministers, every, we are open a control room there, I have charged the control room. Each and every minute, we are watching and sensing what the things are going to happen there.
We have been scared for three days.
One day, it will go in a such a way, the next day, with the help of satellite, they are telling, it will not go there, it will go this way.
We have been scared for three days.
So, for each and every messages, they are evacuating people from there.
We have been scared for three days.
Because a wind is coming.
We have been scared for three days.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
The Bible tells, such a wind is blowing instead of you and me.
We have been scared for three days.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. The devil is fearing your wind instead of you.
We have been scared for three days.
When you are telling, praise the Lord, the spiritual word is trembling.
We have been scared for three days.
If a spirit of a born again Christian is praying, the devil don't know what the next word he is going to tell.
We have been scared for three days.
Hallelujah.
Because he is trembling your prayer.
We have been scared for three days. He is trembling your emotions and feelings.
We have been scared for three days.
Such a spiritual atmosphere we are carrying.
We have been scared for three days.
Such a power we are carrying.
We have been scared for three days.
Because we are born in the spirit.
We have been scared for three days.
We, our spirit plus the spirit of God is combined together and we are walking together and we are doing the will of God.
We have been scared for three days.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
So, for, in this world, the God has given such a privilege.
We have been scared for three days.
We have given you all the words. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Such a wind is blowing instead of you and me.
We have been scared for three days.
You know, this is a spiritual word.
We have been scared for three days.
The devil is a spirit.
The devil is a spirit.
God is spirit.
We have been scared for three days.
You and me are born in the spirit.
We have been scared for three days.
Hallelujah. The Bible tells, as a wind blows, we can blow the atmosphere of the devilish nature.
We have been scared for three days.
We can walk in the spirit.
We can walk in the spirit.
We can travel in the spirit.
We can travel in the spirit.
We can sense the things of the spirit.
We have been scared for three days.
In Colossians 2nd chapter, 5th verse, Paul is telling.
We have been scared for three days.
It's a beautiful word we can read.
It's a beautiful word.
Paul is telling.
I am not in the touch of Colossia.
I am not in the touch of Colossia. He is far away from Colossia.
I am not in the touch of Colossia.
Just think, now we have Zoom, so many apps, we can talk to different nations in a single time.
We have been talking to many people.
When Paul is writing this book.
I have written it in the book.
There is no app or any phone or anything.
We have been talking to people.
But he is telling.
He said, "In my body, I am far away from you."
I am far away from you. But in my spirit.
I am looking each and every persons gatherings and everything I am looking. We have been talking to people.
Such a spiritual life is possible.
We have been talking to people.
If it is possible for Paul, it is possible for you and me.
We have been talking to people.
Hallelujah.
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 For such a supernatural thing, you and me are born from God.
We have been scared for three days.
Don't think in these last days, all the faith will be over.
We have been talking to people.
The God tells me, in the last days, supernatural faith will be raised.
He said, "In this world, you have given us the words."
Some youth will go to the world for the supernatural generation. Youth will do great things for the glory of God.
We have been scared for three days.
In Kerala, I know, small children, small kids are doing supernatural healings and powers are manifested in their touches.
We have been scared for three days.
The dog have a spiritual background also.
We have been scared for three days.
Hallelujah. I know in from this city also, the people will raise supernatural generation for the glory of Jesus.
We have been scared for three days.
Now the city is known in the name of some, some goddess of this world.
We have been talking to people.
But, but you are a nation changes.
We have been talking to people.
Your supernatural prayer will change the cities.
We have been scared for three days.
It will tell, it is a history.
We have been scared for three days.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
You are a history makers of Jesus Christ.
We have been scared for three days.
Your prayer will bring the victories.
We have been scared for three days.
Because when you are staying here also, you are praying in the spiritual realm.
We have been scared for three days.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. You know, the book of Second Kings, there is a beautiful words, I want to read that words also.
I have read it.
6th chapter.
6th verse.
The dice are coming like this.